Guys, ready?
Okay.
Good evening, I'll call the meeting of the East Providence City Council to order November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Madam Clerk, would you please call the role of the council?
Councilman Fogarty. Councilman Lawson.
Yeah.
Council Vice President Rigo.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Souza.
Yeah.
Council President Rodricks.
Here, the records show there's a quorum for members present. I did hear just within the hour from Councilman Fogarty, who was planning on being here, but he did authorize me to say that he cannot make it. They are having a difficult evening. They're losing a family pet. They don't think the pet will make the evening. So the family is gathered around their little dog, and hopefully things work out for the Fogarty family, grandchildren, and their pet. With that, please rise for the pledge. Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you would start the reading of the agenda.
Consent calendar for discussion and possible vote. Council Journals, approval of regular meeting minutes, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and November fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve. Oh, sorry.
I actually would like to table November fourth as it's not included in here, so I would include it on the December fourth one, if that's okay?
Okay.
Motion to approve the Council Journals for the thirtieth day of September twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Without the number four, motion made by Council Vice President Rigo, seconded by Councilman Lawson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next item?
Tax abatements, cancellation and abatements, tax assessors office, twenty-five thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars and seventy-six cents.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Council Vice President to approve, seconded by Councilman Lawson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Tax Assessment Board of Review, two thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents.
There a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion, Councilman Lawson, to approve.
Second.
Second, Council Vice President Rigo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next item?
No.
I'll make a motion to bundle one through four.
Hang on, let's let the clerk read the.
I can't get my mouth open. Licenses for.
Clerk has to earn her pay tonight, so.
Licenses for discussion and possible vote, motion to bundle non-public hearing licenses one, C one through C four.
Make a motion to bundle C one through C four.
The motion is to bundle licenses on the agenda listed as C one through C four. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there a motion? Any opposed? The ayes have it. Four, zero. Is there a motion to approve, Councilman Lawson, to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Council Vice President Rigo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next item?
Public hearing, number one, annual alcoholic beverage licenses renewals, please refer to Exhibit A for business listings.
Mister President?
Yes, sir.
In compliance with Rhode Island general laws thirty-six fourteen dash six dash one, I hereby recuse from participating in discussion or taking official action relating to said matters. This does not prohibit participation as a member of the public in open meeting pursuant to Commission Regulations seven zero zero three.
Thank you. Council Vice President Rigo is recused from this discussion.
Have we heard from the police any concerns on any of these licenses? Has there been any concerns raised by the police department on any of these licenses?
No, they all been approved.
Okay.
So everything, obviously, if it got to this point, everything's in order, the paperwork, police department have, has approved. Any specific questions by anybody on the council? It's not a public hearing?
It's a public.
This one is.
This one is, says non-public.
No, this one's.
Item D?
Item, yes, public hearing.
Which one? What number is it?
The licenses.
And the licenses, mine said.
And I'm sorry, I didn't put those.
Okay, that's all right. So while we're waiting to see if there is any council comment, anyone, I'll open it up, who's a public hearing. Anyone present wants to speak for or against this license? Once again, is anyone here present to speak for or against this license? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the licenses listed on the agenda for renewal.
Councilwoman Souza makes the motion to approve as listed. There a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Lawson, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have that. Three to zero. Thank you. Next item?
Number two, street abandonment. Summary, the purpose of the public hearing is for the city council to consider the abandonment of a one thousand three hundred and fifty square foot portion of Breeze Avenue that is currently unimproved in a butts property at eighty-two Crescent View Avenue owned by Paul Platt.
Okay, one second.
Make a motion to approve.
Just want Councilman Rigo to get settled, but we do have a motion on the floor by Councilman Lawson to approve. Is there a second?
Pending the public hearing.
Yep.
Second.
So we have a second, Councilwoman Souza. Anyone else who'd like to speak on this is open up for a public hearing? Is anyone here that wants to speak for or against this? For? I don't know if we need to describe this for any of the.
It's if you go down Crescent View Ave.
Right.
Heading towards Crescent Park on the right, it's kind of like juts out and stuff like that, so it's been that way forever.
Right.
You know, so.
Makes makes sense.
Yep. It is not, yeah.
To the advantage of.
Nothing onerous about this.
We'll close the public hearing. Don't hear anyone coming forward. If there's no other discussion on the council, we've had a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Next item?
Two B, resolution abandonment of a portion of a certain portion of land consisting of the one thousand three hundred and fifty square feet that is currently the right of way of Breeze Avenue and being bounded and noted in the attached Exhibit A, subject to receiving a mitts and bounds description introduced by the city council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Pending the public hearing.
Motion to approve pending the hearing by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Council Vice President Rigo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next item?
Public comment. Rick Lawson?
I put this, I forgot to add it to the agenda. I just want to follow up on the Veterans Day stuff. We had an awesome dinner, well-attended. Thank you guys so much, the support you guys give to veterans. It's it's noticed and we are grateful. We had a great night. Everything was good. Next, next tomorrow, eleven to one at the Senior Center is Veterans Cafe put on by the Office of Veterans Affairs. So I know it's during the workday for most of us, but if anybody's available, would like to make it. You're more than welcome. Again, it's eleven to one at the Senior Center. And again, I just want to thank you guys, everybody, Roses Tavern, All Seasons Cafe, the Blue Star Moms, the Elks. It was a great dinner, great time, and it's appreciated. So I just wanted to extend that. Thank you.
And and thank you to yourself, who pretty much acted as the chair of this event, along with Councilman Fogarty. Councilwoman Souza did bring baked goods. I didn't get to bring any home because Lawson took them all after.
No, they were gone.
Left.
They were gone, buddy.
So it was it was a very positive night.
Lana took the rice cups. That was hers.
Thank you. Any other person signed up?
Yes, Clay Graham.
Hi, just come to the podium and you just have to give your name and address for the record. Thanks.
Hi, my name's Clay Graham. I live at fifty-nine Grosvenor Avenue, right around the corner. I just wanted to speak about the e-bike ordinance. So I just wanted to understand if there's any differentiation between like Class One, Class Two, Class Three, and motorized dirt bikes. I have a Class One e-bike. It goes like less than twenty miles an hour. And I know the issue was like at the park with like the burnout, and I think that would be hard to do with some of the Class One, Class Two, and Class Three. So I'm just asking, you know, please don't, I guess penalize those that use it for, like, my wife commutes to Brown with with her bike, and she puts like, we have a shih-tzu that she puts on the back, so it's just, you know, it's a tool for us. And then the second thing I want to talk about is, we have a lot of speeding on our street with like last few years at the bridge. Like people regularly doing fifty, sixty miles an hour. It's an estimation, of course. I've commented on like the GIS portal, but I haven't heard anything back, and I just wanted to, I have like a kid on the way. There's a lot of old people on, older people on our street and young families, and just looking out for all of our safety, so.
Sure. No, thank you for coming out. As far as the e-bikes, number one, for anyone who was expecting any action tonight, it's not on the agenda. There'll be no vote on this tonight. It'll be the next meeting, which I think is December four. It couldn't be on tonight because there was a, between the last meeting and this meeting was a legal holiday, which delayed our legal advertising in the local paper, so it wouldn't be advertised legally in time for tonight. So there was nothing other than that involved. And as far as I'm concerned, the others can speak. We're not changing anything. The e-bikes go by whatever the state laws are. We're just asking, some of us, anyway, are asking that they be prohibited from driving on basketball courts, tennis courts, grassy fields. You can go to any park in the city that you want on an e-bike and just park in the parking lot or some appropriate space and enjoy the park. You know, this is not to prevent people from having having use of any city property or parks or playgrounds. And I agree, but maybe that damage we've seen might not have been an e-bike. It looked like it could have been a minibike or, you know, there's a lot of abuses there as well. But at least this, our police chief agreed that this gives him the legal tools to enforce it anyway. If he sees any kind of vehicle that doesn't belong there, he can do something. But we're not going to stop your wife from going to Brown or going to any of our playgrounds. And I'm sure that you folks are responsible and you'll pull up and.
Yeah.
Park the bike and enjoy the park. So that's the intent, as I see it. Yep, thank you.
Mister President?
Yes, Council.
For the record, our next meeting is Tuesday the second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think I said the fourth.
Yeah, somebody said, yeah, the sixth is Saturday, PCURI, that's all I know. I backed it up.
So to clarify, our next council meeting is Tuesday, December second, right, twenty twenty-five. Thank you, Councilman, Council Vice President. Anyone else on the list to speak?
Alex and Kate?
Hi, just, this, sure, this name and address for the record?
I'm Alex Bolvis, and I'm at one oh four Waterview Avenue.
Welcome.
And how about the little guy? What's, what's, what's Little Man's name?
This is Daniel.
Hi, Daniel. I think he's the youngest one to appear in front of us in three years.
We just wanted to come out, and we saw that on the conversation document tonight, was thinking about investment opportunities, particularly in spooky bottom. That has been an area that we are down by all the time, and our grant opportunities, and we're just so excited to see that you're continuing to think about how to invest in that space. That is, you already see an amazing amount of foot traffic down there. The troll was a spectacular ad, just in the cultural vibe of the city. You've cleared it out and added some fencing. The decisions this committee has made have really revitalized that space. And the more that you can do to continue to draw people down there and make it a space that's usable for kids with a place set, adults for a place to sit and even workout, calisthenics places that, there's space there. I love to hear that you guys are thinking about it. It's so exciting. We're like, let's go to town council at bedtime.
Thanks. Yeah, hopefully, Mayor's office and us will get that grant and get this, get this done. It's, I agree with your sentiments. Thanks for coming out. Anyone else?
And public comment?
Okay, thank you. Next item?
Appointment, appointment of Jeremy Leach, Esquire for the Waterfront District Commission.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Lawson to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Souza, also Council Vice President Rigo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you to Mister Leach for stepping it, stepping it up. Next item?
New mayor, new business, Mayor Communication, Director of Policy and Constituent Services, Andre Herrera.
You confuse me. You started out by saying new mayor? I think you, okay, I get it.
Members of the council, I just wanted to officially introduce to you Andre Herrera. Andre comes with a wealth of experience in both federal and local government and private sector. Really has been wonderful. This is week two for Andre in the office, and I already see remarkable things coming from this young man. Worked with Congressman Sisalini's office for four years, worked with Congressman Gabe Amos' office for a year, and was also working with the City Council of Providence before that. So he's got a lot of experience. He just came out of the private sector, and we're happy to have him working with our team. He will be handling policy, constituent services, and also will be the liaison to the community, members of the council. Members of the council are always able to reach out to me direct, but if you ever wanted to reach out to someone in the office, Andre is the person to reach out to. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Andre, if you want to say a couple of words? Welcome, welcome to the city.
Good evening, Council President, members of the city council. Thank you so much for having me, and thank you, Mayor, for the very kind words. I'm honored to be part of your administration and really look forward to serving the residents of East Providence.
After you receive a hundred emails from us tomorrow, we'll see if you still feel that way.
Give me thirty days. I'll hold it down.
All right, thirty days, members.
All right, so just some items for announcement, announcing the hiring of Andre Herrera as Director of Policy and Constituent Services. And I also have some proclamations here. Council President, would you like me to read the titles of the proclamations or read them in?
Just the titles, please.
Can I though request that the last two be read?
Certainly. Okay.
So we have a proclamation celebrating Extra Mile Day, proclamation affirming a sister-city relationship with Via Franca do Campo.
Actually, can we do the last three? Because that's an important one, too. Yeah, if we could have those read in.
Sister city relations, Via Franca do Campo Portugal. Whereas the Portuguese-American community within the city of East Providence has always maintained a close relationship with the country of Portugal. And whereas many Portuguese immigrants within the city of East Providence originate from the village of Via Franco do Campo on the island of Sao Miguel Azores in Portugal. Whereas a significant amount of East Providence residents from Via Franca, those immigrants came to this city for everything East Providence has to offer, and also brought with them their traditions, culture, and for many, their work ethic. Whereas Via Franca offers its thousands of tourists that visit each year, great beaches, its island, Islet Senora de Paz, and its famous custards, Quijadas de Via Franca do Campo do Morgado, which are imported from Via Franca to Canada, Bermuda, and the United States. And whereas the purpose of becoming a sister city with Via Franca do Campo is to strengthen relations between the city of East Providence, Rhode Island, and the village of Via Franca do Campo Portugal. And whereas since nineteen eighty-three, the nonprofit organization Via Francincis da Nova Inglaterra has brought hundreds of people each year from the village, Canada, Bermuda, and all over the United States to join in its anniversary celebration. Whereas the organization also has an ongoing relationship with the city through its cultural and educational events at Weaver Library, participation in city events, and fundraising for various scholarships. And whereas both the city of East Providence and the village of Via Franca do Campo are committed to developing tourism, exchanging business practices, and creating opportunities for people to learn and experience other cultures through long-term relationships. Whereas the City Council of the city of East Providence, through Resolution one hundred and fifty-eight on October first, twenty twenty-four, affirm a sister relationship with Via Franco do Campo. Therefore, I, Mayor Robert L. De Silva, on behalf of the city of East Providence, hereby affirm its relationship with the village of Via Franco do Campo Portugal as its sister city. All right. And the proclamation recognizing Staff Sergeant Peter Barilla.
I think before that was Chappie Rose.
Chappie Rose, sorry.
Either way.
Either, both of them. In fact, while you're pausing there for a second, I'd ask Councilwoman, I believe, is, you have a connection to the sister city? Did you want to add anything?
Yeah, so we did, the the city council and administration collectively supporting our second sister city here in the city of East Providence did have an event a couple of weeks ago where the president of the Council of Via Franca, President Grassa Mello, and her vice president, Carlos Pimentel, were here amongst a couple of other dignitaries here at City Hall, where we unveiled an amazing tile plaque that sits outside of City Hall on Grove Avenue across, right at the the front door, illuminated with lights. The tiles emulate the same plaque that also sits in the rotunda in the heart of Via Franca, where the residents there and our immigrants who come back can enjoy matching recognitions of our ongoing commitment to each other to provide, again, cultural, economic, and support for our two communities and countries.
Great, thank you. Thank you for your work. Thank you, Mayor De Silva, for your work in bringing these dignitaries together. Do you want to continue, please? Thank you.
Proclamation recognizing Corporal Avalino Chappie Rose. Whereas Corporal Avalino Chappie Rose was born on March twenty-first, nineteen twenty-four, in the city of East Providence. The eldest of four children born to Jose de Rosa of the island of Fogo, and Annie Brito Rose of the island of Brava. And whereas Corporal Avalino Chappie Rose was a cornerstone of the East Providence Cape Verdean community, he was the heart of those living in the area of Carlton Avenue, and his impact on those lives he touched carries on to this day. And whereas in nineteen forty-two, at just eighteen years old, Corporal Rose enlisted in the US Army, serving as a corporal in the eighteen eighty-three, eighteen eighty-third Aviation Engineer Battalion, an all-black unit attached to the Tenth Air Force in the China Burma India Theater during World War Two. Known as the Trail Blazers, these soldiers carved roads through some of the most treacherous terrain of the war, an effort recognized by historians as one of the most complex and courageous undertakings of the Allied campaign. And whereas for his service, he was awarded the Purple Heart, the World War Two Victory Medal, and the Asiatic Pacific Campaign Medal with Bronze Battle Star. He later served as commander of the China Burma India Mini-State Basa Rhode Island Veterans Association in two thousand three to two thousand nine. And whereas after returning home from the war, Corporal Rose married Alice Fontz, first settling in Fox Point, Providence, but Chappie's intentions were always to return to his roots of East Providence. And whereas Corporal Rose's devotion to the Cape Verdean community continues to be on full display today, where he was known as a Jack of all trades, a pillar of the Cape Verdean Progressive Center, Chappie volunteered countless hours as building chair, shaping the physical and spiritual heart of the Cape Verdean CV Club through his hands-on work with renovations to the front bar and construction of the Founder's Hall. And whereas Corporal Rose also was the first black slash Cape Verdean processing sheriff in Rhode Island and the first black Cape Verdean waterfront superintendent for John J. Orr and Sons. And whereas Corporal Rose was a war hero, a trailblazer on the docks, and a visionary son of immigrant parents. He was a man ahead of his time, fiercely proud of his heritage, deeply rooted in his neighborhood, and committed to lifting others through hard work, humility, and love. Therefore, I, Mayor Robert L. De Silva, on behalf of the city of East Providence, recognize the late Avalino Chappie Rose for his years of dedication and contribution to our community, and thank him for his dedicated service to the United States of America this Veterans Day in recognition whereof, hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the city of East Providence to be here unto affix this eleventh day of November, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Next proclamation?
Proclamation recognizing Staff Sergeant Peter Barilla. Whereas Staff Sergeant Peter Barilla was born in Syracuse, New York, on January fourth, nineteen thirty-four. Barilla went to Assumption Catholic Academy and then Bryant University to pursue his education. Whereas Staff Sergeant Peter Barilla moved to Rhode Island in nineteen. Peter Barilla moved to Rhode Island in 1959 after getting married to his wife and spent all but two years in the city of East Providence. And whereas Staff Sergeant Barilla graduated from high school at the age of 18 on June 20th, 1952, and enlisted in the United States Air Force just a month later in July of the same year. Whereas during his time in the armed services, Staff Sergeant Barilla would spend his basic training at the Sampson Air Force Base in Geneva, New York, three months at Keesler Air Force Base in Biloxi, Michigan, and a year at the England Air Force Base in Alexandria.
Biloxi's in Mississippi.
Biloxi, Mississippi, apologies. And a year at England Air Force Base in Alexandra, Alexandra, Louisiana? No. Louisiana. And whereas Barilla was then deployed to Japan where he spent 18 months, followed by an additional six months in the Philippines during the Korean War. And whereas Staff Sergeant Barilla's service, he received the State of New York Medal of Merit, Good Conduct Medal, Korean Service Medal, United Nations Service Medal, and the National Defense Service Medal. And whereas after returning to Rhode Island after his military service, Staff Sergeant Barilla and his wife would settle down, have three children, who Barilla describes as his greatest accomplishments in life, Peter Barilla Jr., Victoria Guthlian, and Catherine Anthony. He now is a grandfather of three, Nicholas, Joshua, and Patrick, as well as a great-grandfather to his grandson Noah. And whereas when Staff Sergeant Barilla returned to the workforce, he began at an accounting firm before joining the state of Rhode Island as a bank examiner, security examiner, and then moving to municipal work for the city of East Providence as a city's controller, and finishing his professional career as East Providence School District's number one school business administrator. And whereas Staff Sergeant Barilla's advice for future generations is, "Think of peace. We need to come together as a nation and get away from the current turmoil. It is not good." "I grew up poor, but we were always surrounded by our friends, our loved ones. We had laughs, we had coffee, we had camaraderie, and I think we need to get back to enjoying one another rather than focusing on our differences," Barilla added. Therefore, I, Mayor Roberto L. De Silva, on behalf of the city of East Providence, I recognize Staff Sergeant Peter Barilla for his years of dedication and contribution to our community and thank him for his dedicated service to the United States of America this Veterans Day. In recognition whereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the city of East Providence to be hereunto affixed this 11th day of November, 2025."
Very good. Thank you very much for the report.
Appreciate it.
Next item.
C, resolutions for discussion and possible-
Can I throw one quick curve? I know I didn't ask for the school committee, but-
Yes.
Next Tuesday, November 25th, they'll be cutting the ribbon. My middle school, the junior high, well, it's middle school, that portion will be open. The kids coming off Thanksgiving break will be reporting to the new wing of the building that was built. And, um, so it's at Martin, 10 a.m. next Tuesday, and then they're going to be moved in. And once they're moved in, construction will start on the other side for the preschool kids, so.
Right, December 1 is the first start date for the students. So families, uh, students, faculty, we, we wish you well, good, good luck. And then the remainder of the year, they'll be demoing the old classroom building, and we, we're going to have a fantastic middle school. Um, the bond issue, as we sit here today, is, is under budget, moving along pretty well, just like the high school plan. So we'll keep our eye on that and wish the students and faculty and all staff good luck as they make-
And thank you and the rest of the building committee. This, this is a big task, from the high school to this, and the city's invested over $300 million in our schools, so.
And part of this bond issue has covered improvements at Waddington Elementary School. There is some demo there of some old type configurations and drainage work that's been going on for decades, problems with drainage there. Um, and Riverside Middle School has received a lot of improvements. So a lot of bang for the buck here.
And to all the naysayers, that they are working. If there's an issue, they are going to address it and take care of it. And, um, it doesn't help all the constant bombardment of negativity. Nobody is intentionally trying to undermine these buildings, and, uh, they have my full support.
Yep, looking good.
I agree, and old terminology, perfection is only a word in the dictionary. And you can go into any building, having had a father that was, in many projects, God rest his soul, and from hospitals to, uh, the John Hancock Building, if you remember, I'm dating myself, where glass plates would fall from, uh, the sky of Boston and on that job. So, you know what? As you said, the naysayers, they have to have something to say. So, you know, say it, but great job on everybody on the building committee and, uh, the contractors, everybody involved in these two school projects, as well as the community center coming along.
Thank you. Exciting time for this, this city. Uh, next item?
C, resolution for discussion and possible vote. Number one, resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management Recreation Department Development Grant Program introduced by Council President Roderick.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Lawson. And we, we talked about this a little bit at the beginning of the meeting, what we want to do with this. Is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Souza. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next item?
Number two, resolution requesting the Rhode Island State Traffic Commission to install a left turn signal and a designated left turn lane at the intersection of Pawtucket Avenue and Waterman Avenue introduced by city council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilwoman Souza. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have that. Thank you.
D, introduction of ordinance for discussion and possible vote. Number one, in ordinance and amendment of Chapter 8 of the revised ordinances of the city of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended to Section 8-31B regarding the repealing holiday sales licenses introduced by Council Vice President Rego.
Motion to move, accept.
Second.
Can you clarify, what was the motion to?
Motion to, uh-
Yeah, it sounded like you said remove.
Oh, I said motion to-
Approve, okay. And so you seconded? Yeah. Motion by Council Vice President Rego to approve, seconded by Councilman Lawson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
And to adjourn.
Next item.
Adjournment?
Yeah. Motion to adjourn, Councilwoman Souza, seconded by Councilman Lawson. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.